Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 6th, 2024. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Tonight with us, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Quirk, Mr. Bessie, and I think we are expecting Town Council Mr. Bowen and Mr. Sullivan momentarily.
Thank you. I am expecting... There is a quorum present, yes. So, Mr. Sullivan is present. And there is a quorum present. May Pledge of Allegiance, please. Hmm. Mr. Bessie.
Wow, back-to-back meetings.
I know.
"To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Malcolm White, who was killed last week on a tragic highway accident. Mac served for eight years as a sewer commissioner, so I'd ask that we have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than 10 minutes per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment. And I see that Ms. Priest has got her hand raised. Noah, would you let Ms. Priest in, please?
Hi. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Gabriella Priest Celestin. I'm an onset resident at 3912th Street.
And you are here to address the board?
Yes. I am here to address the board to follow up on several emails that I've sent around safety issues with 23 Wareham Avenue. In particular, these are safety issues that have existed for many years that I know the board is aware of. They have escalated recently, I think in particular because people are coming from out of town and driving down the streets and don't know that 12th Street, which intersects the house at 23 Wareham Ave, is a one-way street. There is a truck that has been parked illegally at the corner of 12th Street and 23 Wareham Ave, and it blocks the one-way sign, the only sign that is at that corner. And so about four times a day on average this summer, I've been seeing cars driving the wrong way down the one-way street because they're not able to see that sign. I've actually talked, stopped and talked to some of the people. They've been very nice and apologetic and just really didn't see the sign because it's blocked by the truck at 23 Wareham Ave. So that is a consistent safety issue, as well as the junkyard materials, the shopping cart in the street. Everything from that yard spilling over to the street, as well as a business being run illegally from that condemned house where a person is living off the grid, apparently with no town services, but is running a business out of the yard. That also brings people stopping at that corner frequently and makes it really hard to drive from 12th Street to Wareham Ave or the other side of 12th Street. So there's been a fire at this house, many other issues that I've enumerated in an email with 20 other neighbors that are very concerned that signed on to that email that was shared with you all, with the police department, with the town council, with the state senator and state representative, and the local newspaper as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Priest. Have a nice evening. Is there anyone else who chooses to address the board?
Richard.
Richard's iPhone. Noah Sullivan? Thank you. And can you let Ms. Priest out, please? Oh, there you are. The record will...
I have nothing to say to the board.
The record will show that you joined our meeting at 7:05. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else who chooses to address the board? No? Okay, we'll go on to announcements. Ms. Corbett?
I have no announcements tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
I wanted to just highlight a few fun things that have been happening that I've had the chance to go to that sort of underscore for me what a fun place that Wareham and Onset are, especially during the summer. First, I want to say, though, if you haven't watched the U.S. Women's Soccer Team yet, please do. They're in the gold medal round, and they're very... Very exciting to watch.
I'm shaking my head. I don't know why they allowed that extra time that they did. That was totally against FIFA rules, but go ahead.
They won.
Yes.
So, one thing that was available to do was the Redmond Hall Annual Clam Bag this past Sunday. Crowd of about 450 people or so gathered outside, had some fantastic clams and other food, had a chance to visit with each other, and really, really fun time there. Next night, there was a play, "As You Like It," showing in the Onset Band Shell, performed by some actors from Cape Cod Community College. Very good, just a wonderful thing to do on a summer evening. And in a different category entirely, I wanted to highlight how useful I thought the session was that we had with Rich Bowen that I think was discussed at the last Select Board meeting, where he was going to talk with us about writing decisions and making records for when we are in our quasi-judicial function as ward members. Thought it was very helpful to understand the fairly rigorous requirements that are helpful to sustaining our decisions and good for the members of the various wards to understand the target that you're aiming for that will make all the hard work that we do as ward members stick. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bessie?
Yes, good evening. So, I just have one thing. I don't know if it would sit here or sit down toward the end with the board comments, but I think it's probably good here. I've been seeing a lot of chatter and a lot of conversation about the project on 6 and 28 and the raised structures that are in the road and people being upset, particularly with the town that nothing's being done about it and the roads aren't completed. I just want to remind everybody that this is a state project that has nothing to do with the town, and we don't have any control over what the state does with this and how quickly they get it done or how not quickly they get it done. But I would say that making the concerns on social media and things like that aren't really going to help you. I would recommend reaching out to the state, maybe a state representative, you know, sending a letter. That's the only way it's going to get heard. I understand the concerns and I agree with you 100%, but unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do to make the project go any faster than what it is. It's all in the hands of the state. So if you do have concerns, whether they are valid or not valid concerns, I would raise them to the people that might be able to help you a little bit. We hear you, we see it, but unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do. So I would reach out to a state representative, maybe reach out to DOT, send a letter, whatever it is. But it's not going to get fixed amongst ourselves. It has to be moved to the next step. And unfortunately, as frustrating as it is, I wish there was something we could do to make it happen and move faster, but unfortunately, we can't. So I just ask you to understand that it's not because we, as a town, don't want it to be done. It's that we just don't have any control over it because it is a state project and not something that the town undertook themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes. Four things. Just a reminder, yes, it is this weekend. All right, good. The Cape Verdean Festival is this weekend. The start's on Saturday. It is on Saturday. I believe start time's 10:00 a.m. Correct me if I'm wrong. So just be prepared for that. The rain date is Sunday. I've heard there's a lot of good food, and it's going to be a great time. Next, fall sports signups for the youth are happening now. So get your kids out there, get them ready to sign up. I know a lot of practices are actually starting within the next week, I believe. School is right around the corner, so please be ready to stop for school buses. The police will be out in full force and ready to hand out those wonderful tickets because you don't feel like stopping for red light, flashing red lights as a school bus. Just remember, it can be a life or death situation, so please pay attention, especially getting off the phone. Lastly, Town of Wareham would like to invite you to participate in our second annual Back to School Main Street Stroll. Let's get our kids ready for school. School supplies, we purchase the supplies, or you can provide your own. We'd like you to help pass out the supplies in front of your business along Main Street or at the train station on Merchant's Way. This will be on August 24th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. If you are interested in participating, you can email myself, jchadwick@wareham MA.us or administration@wareham MA.us or give us a call, 508-291-3100, extension 3110. And this is basically where all the businesses get together on Main Street and the town, and we support all the kids going back to school. There is a fun amount of stuff. We're giving students a chance to pick up free elementary and middle school supplies, such as pens, pencils, erasers, notebooks, earbuds, and a lot more. Families that wish to participate should start at the old train station on Merchant's Way, where they will be given a tote bag and a list of participating locations. And once again, it's August 24th from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And let me also say, Mr. Sullivan, if I'm not mistaken, there's also some free ice cream for the kiddos involved, so...
I was going to say you buried the lead.
Yeah, I wanted to save that for the last, you know? Make sure they listen to everything. So don't forget about the free ice cream. Come on down. It's only valid for that day. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I have a couple of announcements. I just want to remind people, Ms. Quirk was talking about all of the wonderful events that she has went to last weekend. This weekend, not only is there the Cape Verdean Festival, but there's also at Saturday at St. Gabriel's Church in Marion at 7:30, Music from Land's End. And if you can go Sunday instead, Church of the Good Shepherd in Wareham at 5:00 p.m. These are absolutely fabulous concerts put on. They're free, and it's world-class music, to be honest with you. There have been some questions on Facebook and other places. What happened to Bill's, what's it, Barnacle Bill's liquor license? There was an auction held a week and a half ago, and there were no bidders. The state had seized the license, and they will continue to hold the license. And we have no idea what will happen because the license is in the hand of the state and the Department of Revenue. We have no further information at all, and I apologize for that. And I think that's it. Yep. Okay, appointments and reappointments. We have five applicants for three positions on the Bylaw Review Committee. We constituted this committee, I don't know, a couple of weeks, maybe three or four weeks after town meeting, and we do have five applicants. So the first one, Ms. Ekstrom, would you raise your hand? We will interview the individuals who are present, and then we will talk about what you would like to do with the applicants. What I will ask each applicant to do is to identify himself, herself, and speak to why he or she would like to be on the committee. Ms. Ekstrom? Ms. Ekstrom, we can't see you or hear you. Ms. Ekstrom, we can't see you or hear you. One more time, Ms. Ekstrom, we can either see you or hear you.
Why don't we come back? Maybe she's having computer troubles.
All right. Is Jillian Morton present? Yes, please raise your hand. Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, if you would let Ms. Morton in, please. Greetings, Ms. Morton. Could you identify yourself for the record and speak to the reasons that you might like to join the Bylaw Review Committee? You're muted.
I was a rookie move. Attorney Jillian Morton, I am a Wareham resident and fifth generation Warehamite. The reason for my interest in this position is that it seemed like a position that I can bring my expertise as an attorney, and the time commitment seemed like it could be something that would work for me. I'm trying to get involved in different areas that I see fit, but that would also work with running a business, running a family, and as an attorney, detail-oriented, and be able to bring these bylaws and recommend them for town meeting. Happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you. Any questions from any one of my board members? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morton. We will be voting on this later on this evening.
Okay.
Thanks so much for your interest. Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, Ms. Ekstrom is raising her hand on another... I can't remember words today. On another... On another thing that she... Maybe it's another computer.
Another device.
Device. Thank you, platform.
I apologize. For some reason, my phone wouldn't pick up.
Could you identify yourself for the record, Ms. Ekstrom? Thank you for persisting on trying to get in.
Thank you. Brenda Ekstrom, trying to get my... See if the video will work. Okay. Brenda Ekstrom, thank you for having me, Madam Chair. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you speak to your desire to be on this committee, please?
Yes, I applied for this position the day after the election, when I saw that the charter had passed by the voters. I've written approved bylaws. I've been a selectman. I've written proposed state laws. I've been involved with the town, and I've been on several committees in the past, and I believe in the rule of law. And I would kindly ask the board if they would consider seeing there are five applicants. Such a dashboard of the charter, which you, I believe, would be appointing to sign up, says that there can be not less than three applicants. And where we have five applicants on this, that maybe the board would consider putting all five on, so that I think having varying perspectives may be more positive for the town. Like, for example, looking at some of the ones that were done with the previous committee, when I was looking back at them, there were some that, had I been on the committee, I may have wanted or may have suggested that they either change or amend rather than move because removing them was detrimental to the town's finances. Specifically, it was, I noticed that there was one that was, they wanted to delete Article 4, I mean, Division 4, Article 1, Section 1, which was appointing the inspector of gas state. And they wanted to delete it because it's covered by Mass. General Law 142, and the town administrator points everything, which of all true. But within that bylaw, it also said that anyone who violates it is subject to a fine of not more than $500 a day. So I think that if we have a building inspector or gas inspector that is violating those rules and regulations of state law, and our inspectors are writing out violations, that's $500 or $300 or whatever. That actually comes to the town coffers. And we eliminated that bylaw, we're eliminating revenue that comes into the town. So there are things like that, but I think a different perspective might be good. So I think that if the board would so consider having five people on it, I think that looking at the people that have applied, I think that we all come from a different perspective, and I think that it might be good to have it on there, to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any one of my board members of Ms. Ekstrom? No? Thank you, Ms. Ekstrom. We will be discussing this further later on in the meeting. Good evening.
Thank you.
Is Jared Fredrickson in the audience? Because I don't see his name, but maybe he's one of those phone numbers. If you were there, Mr. Fredrickson, could you raise your hand, please? Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, would you take Ms. Morton and Ms. Ekstrom both out of the participants, please? Thank you. Jared Fredrickson, are you there in the audience? No? Okay. I did not hear from him that he could not make it. We will, if he appears later on in the meeting, we will listen to him. You already know the two, that the last two applicants... Oh, excuse me. Two of the applicants were unable to make this meeting. They both had excuses about reasons that they could not attend this meeting this evening. So we will move on to the appointment for Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Chadwick, all excepted motion. The Historical Commission gets to put a member on the Community Preservation Committee. As you saw in the paperwork, they have recommended, the Historical Commission has recommended that Mr. Blair be the Community Preservation Committee rep from the Historical Commission. I know that sounds computer. Anyway, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I would like to appoint Robert Blair as a new member to the Community Preservations Committee Historical Commission rep with a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint him. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so. The same comment that we always make about the paperwork, having to do the ethics training in the open meeting law training. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Chadwick, you're reading the voice, please. We will read into the record the process for calling a town meeting, and then we will read into the record the notice of intent for the fall town meetings. Mr. Chadwick, floor is yours.
Yes. Town of Wareham, the process for calling a town meeting, October 28th, 2024. Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, Select Board establishes all dates for completion of the warrant for the fall town meeting. Friday, September 6th, 2024, last day to post upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website notice of intentions to Select Board to call the fall town meeting for October 28th, 2024, and open warrant Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, at least 10 days' notice before warrant closes. Monday, September 16th, 2024, last day for articles and/or petitions to be inserted in the warrant 10 days or more after warrant opens. Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, Select Board officially closes the warrant. Monday, September 23rd, 2024, last day to post upon town's principal bulletin board and the town website and deliver a copy of warrant to the town moderator and to the Chair of the Finance Committee. WHRC Section 2-4D, warrant to be delivered no later than last Monday in September. Monday, October 28th, 2024, commencement of fall town meeting, Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1. Fall town meeting shall be held on the 4th Monday of October.
Thank you. And just for the record, in your packet, the process had that it was Monday, September 6th. Obviously, it's Friday, September 6th, which is what I believe Mr. Chadwick read.
I did say.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Chadwick, would you please read the notice of intent?
Yes. Notice of 2024 Fall Town Meeting, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth, to either of the constables of the Town of Wareham. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham that the fall town meeting has been called by the Select Board to be held at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, October 28th, 2024, at which time the business of the town meeting shall be transacted. Last day for submission of articles to be inserted in the warrant is Monday, September 16th, 2024, by 5:00 p.m. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, and you are hereby directed to post this notice upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before Monday, September 23rd, 2024. Hereof fail not to make due return of this posting with your doing there, thereon to the town clerk, given under our hands at Wareham this sixth day of August in the year 2024. True copy of test. Sign the Select Board of Wareham.
Excellent. We don't need to vote on that, but that is the notice that will be delivered by the constable on Thursday to the town clerk's office, to all of the posting areas in town. Any questions about that at all? Jared Fredrickson, if you're there, could you raise your hand, please? Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Noah Sullivan, would you let Mr. Fredrickson into the meeting, please? Thank you, Mr. Chadwick, for reading that.
I did try and text Mr. Fredrickson, but...
He's here.
I'm assuming I have the wrong number.
Yeah, he is here. Good evening, Mr. Fredrickson. Would you identify yourself with the record, please, and speak to your reasons for wanting to be on this Bylaw Review Committee, sir?
Sure. So, good evening. First of all, I'm glad to be here. Say it. My name is Jared Fredrickson, applicant for a position on the Bylaw Review Committee. I have some background anyway in public policy. That was my area of study. I know my way around Wareham bylaws after about a fair amount of time reading through all that, both regular bylaws and the like during my time working at Town Hall. Needless to say, I like to think I have a fairly decent understanding of what we're looking at here, and I think I can provide a different perspective and maybe an outside set of eyes on the work that the Bylaw Review Committee has been doing. Yeah, that's about all I got, I guess, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions of Mr. Fredrickson?
I have one.
Yes, please.
Jared, can you remind me of what your degree is in?
Sure thing. I have a bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in public policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Fredrickson? I don't think you might have heard us earlier. We will be discussing our votes later on in the meeting, Mr. Fredrickson. But thank you very much for appearing this evening, and thank you for the work that you've done on behalf of the town in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you for, you know...
Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Gilbert. Could you raise your hand? And Mr. Chadwick, you're going to read the donation, please.
Yes. Just had that. Is that the donation for the Council on Aging?
Yes, sir.
Oh, all right, yes. I move to accept the donation of $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Hassel to the Council on Aging.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept that donation. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Very good. Um, Mr. Noah Sullivan, would you let Mr. James Gilbert in, please? He does have his hand up. Um, one of Ms. Corbett's um initiatives has been all along to, well, I'll let her speak to it. So this is really a preview of one of the things that Ms. Corbett will be discussing. Well, she won't be discussing it later on because she's discussing it now. Go ahead, Ms. Corbett.
Okay, uh, one of my priorities, as Judith has asked us to bring forward some of our priorities um for this year in terms of our time on the Select Board. One of mine is um open government. It's been uh something that's been very important to me. For my entire adult career, starting as a journalist. And making sure that the residents of Wareham are informed about what's going on with Wareham Town Government. And uh, this opportunity came to me from the good folks at Wareham Media. And uh, we've done a couple of test runs on it, and um, I will let them speak to exactly the purpose of it. But it does definitely fits into um one of my priorities of having a more open town government. And helping the residents of Wareham understand what's going on.
So, Mr. Gilbert, could you identify yourself with the record and? I guess, are you going to be doing the presentation, sir?
Yes, I have a PowerPoint here. My name's James Gilbert. I'm Executive Director of Wareham Media. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, yes, I have a brief PowerPoint slide here with the video. Um, as requested, so um, I'm going to start by playing the content that we're. I guess the, the major preface of this is that it's a pilot program right now. This has not seen the light of day. Um, this is for your review and uh feedback.
This is Select Board Member Sarah Corbett with a recap of the July twenty-third Select Board Meeting. Concerns regarding local control of solar farms dominated the discussion at the recent meeting. Select Board Chair Judith Whiteside took action by writing to State Rep. Susan Williams Gifford. Urging her to back a House Clean Energy Bill that aims to maintain local authority over the siting of solar arrays. This initiative comes in response to a competing bill that poses transferring this control from municipalities to the state. During deliberations, Select Board Member Sherry Quirk, who has tracked this issue since her tenure on the planning board. Expressed concerns that potential new regulations could lead to, quote, municipal entities losing control over significant land use and planning matters, unquote. Accuing those sentiments, Select Board Member Sarah Corbett described the possibility of forfeiting control over the placement of large solar arrays as, quote, frightening, unquote. Fearing it could result in extensive forest clearcutting. In other business, the Select Board listened to Mark Rasmussen, President of the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Who sought their endorsement for BBC's acquisition of the Slocum Gibbs property in Carver and Wareham. This expansive tract spanning hundreds of acres of bogs, uplands, and forests along the Wee Weantik River. Would be preserved for conservation purposes. Responding to queries from Select Board Member Ron Bessie. Rasmussen assured that the Cranberry Box would continue to operate under the guidance of an experienced farmer. The preserved land would also offer opportunities for recreational activities such as hiking and kayaking. The Board also granted approval for two new members of the Cultural Council. And voted to approve an application for a manager change at Wines and More located on Cranberry Highway. Thank you for tuning in. To watch the full meeting, visit the Wareham Media YouTube channel and check out the Select Board playlist. And don't forget to join us for the next Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, August sixth. And open and accountable government depends on you, Wareham. See you there.
So this script was primarily uh written by a Select Board. Uh, member Ms. Corbett, um, and with some review and help with our creative director, Michael Shockett. Um, we're really um, you know, seeing this as accessibility. It would be shared through Facebook and Instagram stories, hence the vertical look of the video. Um, so busy residents can catch up on important decisions and be encouraged to watch the entire meeting, a little bit of a leader situation. Um, and then the shorter recaps on the stories can be easily viewed anytime, making it a little bit more convenient. Um, enhanced engagement, the captions are included for clarity. Um, ensures that ver, viewers can understand the content, even if they're watching without sound, as a lot of folks do do on their phones these days. Um, optimized for social media, stories are ideal for Facebook and Instagram these days, reaching a broader audience. Mobile friendly, designed for the phone. Um, as we know, a lot of content viewing is coming off of the television and off of the computer and into your phones. Um, highlighting key issues, as was seen in the content, recaps can focus on the most important topics discussed. Um, ensuring critical issues are receive attention they deserve. Um, and then this is a big one, I think, building trust. Regular updates um can build trust within the community by showing a commitment to keeping residents informed. Um, the educational value, brief summaries educate residents about the workings of the local government. Um, and inform the community about what's going on, um, including participating in the next full meetings. Um, this is a really, uh, we call it a production effective because it's not, it, there's no cost, so it's not really cost effective. Um, short story videos, optimize resources, making them efficient for us to turn around in a timely way. Um, and that quick turnaround allows for this stuff to get out relatively quickly to folks. So um, we're looking to leverage the power of Facebook and Instagram as we already have been. Um, with the stories, with the captions through and Wareham Media and the town Select Board can significantly enhance community engagement. Promote transparency and continue to foster a well-informed public. That's what we have.
Could you, before I let the other guys ask questions, that was less than a minute that she was speaking, am I correct?
Um, actually, that was about two minutes.
Oh, that was, that's a different version than what you showed?
Yes, we felt that her voiceover was a little bit better. Um, and wanted to show you what two minutes looked like.
Okay, we had seen a one-minute version, um, Ms. Quirk and I, I believe. Okay.
That's correct. It was a little bit over one minute.
Okay. Any questions from my board members? Jared, Mr. Chadwick?
I just want to say, hell, yeah, you guys, nice job. Um, I love that. And I know we had it all talked in the meeting, and today's day and age, everyone likes the, the quick. Three-minute spiel on Facebook, and I think that's awesome. Killer job. Awesome. Love it coming into the next century, coming into the new age uh for the younger crowd. Thank you very much, both of you guys. Uh, awesome job. I can't thank you enough.
Thanks for that.
Mr. Bessie.
Uh, I just want to echo, echo Jared. I mean, in today's, in today's world, uh, we're such a fast-moving society. Uh, we don't really have time to sit and even think these days. Uh, so to be able to capture, you know, a, a meeting that could be an hour, two hours, three hours, whatever it might be. Uh, in a quick, you know, minute and a half, two-minute video, really highlighting. Um, but I think also raising awareness to the next meeting, I think, is very important. Because maybe people don't know when the meetings are, and they don't have a chance to go on the website and figure it all out. So, uh, I really think it, it's taking advantage of uh what we have um and putting it at our fingertips. Um, I like the fact that it's, uh, I like how you say production effective and not really cost-effective. Because you're not really talking about dollars and cents to make it happen. Um, I think it's a really ingenious way to um, keep the, keep the town informed uh at a, a really quick, high-level. Um, thought process of, of the meetings prior, um, and really using uh what we have. Uh, to further leverage transparency, um, so that people really understand what's going on. So, good job. Uh, kudos to you, uh, Sarah, on uh, um, on, on being the face of that uh very first presentation. Uh, hopefully many more. Um, but uh, great job on it. I really like it. Uh, the only thing that I'll say is my last name was spelt wrong, but that's okay.
Oh, man. Uh, that's, so that's where the work comes in is um. Uh, checking the typos in the caption.
Ms. Quirk? If, if you guys want, if you want help with that. And we can always cast an eye on it and help out there, but I just want to say, uh, not just because. The piece led with one of the subjects nearest and dearest to my heart. Um, and did a good job of covering it, but also because of the way that it quickly put a lot of information in front of um. Whoever uh was able to watch it. I think this is, you know, just really brilliant. And I think the uh, the effort, the result uh is really commendable. So, uh, hats off.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, and they were the same questions that I had discussed with Ms. Corbett, and then I actually asked town council. Um, I think it's great, first of all, and thank you very much for taking, taking the initiative. Um, are you always going to be the person doing the? The filming, I guess?
Me?
Yeah.
I don't know. We hadn't really talked about it.
Oh, okay, so I think.
They reached out to me initially because of my background in journalism. And honestly, putting together these short little snippets is right in my wheelhouse. It was fun and easy for me to do, but I have no proprietary claims to being the voice and the face of the recap. So if we want to bring it out to the rest of the crew, I am totally on with that.
Uh, I just, I think it's a question that the public might ask, you know. Uh, and again, obviously, you do have the background. Um, and. So, in five years, you're not going to be a selectman anymore, maybe, or whatever. Who's going to do it when you are no longer doing it? Because I'm, I'm, I'm talking about continuity here for the right reasons, because I think it's a great program. But it's, who's going to be doing it?
Well, I plan to be here for another twenty years, Judy. You've been my idol as far as that goes.
God, okay.
So I don't know.
Okay.
But it's something to think about. You're right.
Okay.
To Judith, to tap off of what Ron just said, uh, everyone's can't even have time to really think. Let alone five years down the road. I mean, this program might be computer automated in five years. It might be.
It would be my A I avatar.
Exactly. So. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about five years, because honestly, in the next three years, I have a feeling we're going to have robots talking for us.
Okay, um, so, and then I guess the other thing would be the issue of censorship or lack thereof. Because always in news, there is a reason for the news. And how would you, as a journalist? Um, not put a spin on what you're reporting, and I think that's important.
Gosh, in this day and age, that really shows you it's a sign of the times that we have to assume I must have a spin if I'm a journalist, instead of assuming I have no spin as a journalist. That's a tradition I grew up in. You come out there and you tell the truth as you see it. You put no opinion into what you're telling the people.
Well, let me phrase it a little differently then. The issue of solar, it, it, solar is a hot issue. That's not, that's not a pun, but in other words, um, how do you? Not take a stance without, how do you report what was discussed without taking your personal opinion and putting it into it? And that's very much part of what Mr. Bowen was talking about on Thursday was the facts. Give us the facts. If, um, you were there, so the, I think that's, I think that's also a valid question. Again, I'm not picking on solar. I'm just asking the question, using that as an example.
Well, in my, in my reporting, I simply, it, I did use my news judgment on, and I will continue to do so on. What were the most interesting discussions of the meeting? And that was one of the most interesting. I think almost everyone who was there had something to say. Um, and in choosing to quote very, I didn't leave out anybody's quotes. You know, I quoted everybody who had anything to say. Um, so if I have, had left out Sherry's quote, that would have been maybe. Slanting it one way or the other, but I, I quoted everyone who had something to say during that discussion, and that's just what I've always done. I, Ron.
And then the other, one minute, Ron, um, the other thing, the one-minute one was very effective, I thought. The two-minute one, is there a time limit beyond which this doesn't become effective?
I think three minutes. In my, in my opinion, I think three minutes would be the max.
As I, I would, I would, I would cap it at two minutes personally. Uh, that was about, as a, as a non-participating committee member. That was about as much as I was paying attention to.
Yeah, this is still in, in, in the stages of learning, and so, you know, the first one was one link, the second one, and I kind of got more into. What I wanted to say and how I wanted to say it, but yeah, I think I should keep an eye on the clock.
Okay, Ron, Mr. Bessie, sorry.
So, so a couple of things. I'll, I'll talk about length of time real quick. Uh, as somebody that is uh really hip to reels and, and lives his life off of that. And trying to capture as much and as little amount of time as possible. I think two minutes is the, the absolute max. I think the sweet spot is right around ninety seconds. Uh, anything after that, I've lost interest and I need to move on because I need to see what else is going on. Um, so definitely length of time. Uh, I think no more than ninety seconds. Um, is, is perfect. I think a little, you know, the two minutes was okay, but I think anything after that, you've, you've lost me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna swipe up and go to the next one. Um, but to talk about um censorship, uh, because it's a very, you know, that word is very. It's a hot and heavy word, just like some of the topics that might be discussed. Um, as, as trying to quote what we're trying to do here and be more transparent. Uh, I don't think that we can truly say that we are transparent if we are censoring any type of stuff that might be said. So in a journalist world, and I'm, I'm no journalist, and I'll, I won't pretend to be one. Um, but in, in understanding what I know about journalism, yes, there are some journalists that have an agenda. Um, this is definitely something that you cannot have an agenda about. You have to stay a hundred percent neutral. And if you can't get all of the facts about a certain topic, then it probably just shouldn't be talked about, period. So if we're going to talk about a topic, or we're going to bring something up on a reel, we have to be able to make sure that we can encompass. All of the important facts of things that people might have said, so that someone doesn't feel any certain way about, well. He or she said this, but I said this, and it wasn't mentioned. So it can get very sticky. Um, so, but, you know, Sarah, with your journalistic old-school mind and not kind of new-school journalism where. Hey, let's see, I want to get the most clicks. I want to get the most likes. That's kind of what I think of journalism today is it's all about click, 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 and how many people will watch what I'm doing. But I would rather focus on the person that is going to speak the, speak the truth and the facts. Uh, as Rich said in, in the meeting that you might have had is, let's talk about facts and facts only. Because when you start varying off of the facts, that's when things can really become murky. Um, so I like exactly what you did in making sure that you didn't cut out quotes. You didn't really, you know, cut down the quote. You said exactly what each individual um had, had spoken about. Um, and I think that's the most important, is making sure that whatever facts are being brought to the table, they are the facts, and we're not adding any type of spin, even adding. Uh, a single word uh that wasn't said, because then it can become, so, like I said, hats off and kudos to the way you did it. I really like it. Um, and uh, that's all I'm going to say, because I could go on for days.
Thanks, Mr. Gilbert?
I just want to take an opportunity to go back to the very first thing that Sarah mentioned about open government. And that, you know, if that's the mission, if that's the, the goal, then I think the content will fit that. Framework, um, and not skew outside of that into opinion or infotainment. You know, if, if, if the, if the goal is pure of open government and getting civic, civic engagement and getting the folks of, of Wareham more involved. And, and aware of the good work that you guys are doing and, and trying to do. Um, I don't think that, that it'll fall into the categories that we're discussing.
Ms. Quirk, did you have any comments or questions?
Other than saying, I think this is a great thing, I, I think the, the points about balance. I, I mean, I view it as balance. I mean, is it a balanced piece? Does it reflect what was said and discussed? Um, and I think uh the uh balance that Sarah has struck is, is good.
Excellent. I just have one other comment. Can you, um? The, the words, when she was speaking, you had the words in type, and I think it should be in a dark type. A dark font, not that light blue. Um, to me, that's a harder thing to read than a black on a, um. Because your background was slightly gray or gray-blue. That would be. To me, that's a harder thing to read than a black on a, um, because your background was slightly gray or gray blue. That would be my suggestion. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, when, um, I think when we come back to your initiatives, Ms. Corbett, we can sort of talk about how we want to proceed, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Gilbert. That was excellent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Discussion regarding the October visit from the former mayor of Wareham, England. It's the former mayor. I had misspoken when I said it was the mayor. So she will be coming with her husband on October 17th. We had talked briefly a couple of weeks ago about putting together some, not entertainment, but some showing off Wareham. They will be staying with Claire and Howie Smith. But our, we should as select board, you know, the chief, chief people in town. I think we should have some kind of reception or something for her. And I, I, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
I think we should have, uh, uh, in my opinion, uh, uh, some sort of big catered dinner. And honestly, I'd love to see it at, you know, maybe the, uh, onset Bay Center, you know, right on the water there, show them, you know, onset bay or, or somewhere that's along the lines of the water and the scenery.
Anyone else?
Well, that is a really interesting idea. I've been to a couple of events at the onset Bay Center and, and talk about showing off, you know, Wareham at its finest. But I just don't know what kind of a budget we have for this event. So the first thing I thought of was a reception for sure, like Jared said, but in the auditorium at the Old Town Hall with the color guard from the JRTC folks, maybe. As many town officials as we can gather, you know, fire chief, police chief in uniform. And this is a little hokey, but to me it's so hometown America is a band. Maybe playing national anthems and maybe some gifts. The town employee below shirts, maybe. Or a T, we could have a T-shirt made that's, again, we get into budget, but the T-shirt made maybe with the Wareham town seal tastefully somewhere on the right or something like that. So that's as far as I got.
Um, all of the things that you mentioned wouldn't fit into the Old Town Hall. We'd have to be using the auditorium. There's, there's just no way. I mean.
I'm sorry. I meant the auditorium. I didn't say it right.
I'm thinking.
That's what I had in my brain. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Do, what kind of budget do we have?
Zero. Unless Mr., unless Mr. Sullivan has some ideas, but I think the thing to do would be to have us come up with some ideas, uh, run them by, in, in other words, we should agree on what we'd like to do. And then I'm not going to put him on the spot and say, how much money do you have? Because that, that's not appropriate. But we'll, we'll figure out if we want to do a dinner, if we want to do something, obviously having something in the auditorium would not cost anything. Having the high school band and, you know, that kind of stuff, that's not going to cost anything. Having food would cost something. A T-shirt, you know, I'll, I'll give you the 25 bucks or whatever, whatever it would be. Remember that this person had regalia of office. She had, she wore a gold chain on top of her. I'm not sure what I would call it, robes of office. So I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if I would go with a T-shirt, but, but again, that's an idea. So.
Well, we're colonialists. We're not monarchists. So, you know, it's.
Okay. Are you, are you volunteering to be sort of in charge of what, what we would like to do?
Is that what I get for doing the most talking?
It's called voluntold.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Sarah, I can, I can, I can get together with you at some point and we can talk about some things. I have some ideas too, but I won't, I won't bore people with the details tonight because we could be here for hours.
Okay, so what I would ask you to do, Ms. Corbett and Mr. Bessie would be get in touch with Ms., uh, with Claire Smith. And make sure that what we plan doesn't overlap or, you know, overtake. It's too late to have a cranberry bog, bog visit because the harvest will have been, you know, finished. But, but there are lots of ideas that, that are Warehammy as opposed to Wareme. Okay? Thank you.
And then we will, I assume you want us to report back to this group.
Yes, in, in two weeks, because even though it's far away, it's not really far away.
Right, good. I was looking for some sort of deadline. Okay.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Excellent.
You act like, you act like we had a choice in that matter of when we needed to come back to.
Yeah, okay. No, you didn't. Okay, discussion and possible vote, road commissioners. The charter revision to have the road commissioners revert to the select board was signed last week sometime. And so we are now road commissioners. There's a lot of stuff that I've sent you in the emails, um, asking you to just look at it and review it. I, I sent you a sign that is on the entry to a town that has adopted section 17 of chapter 90, um, which sort of standardizes things. I also told you that the previous road commissioners, when they were separate commission, adopted the, their standardized rules and regulations about signage and that kind of thing. The advantage of having the adoption of chapter 90, section 17C or whatever one it is, um, is that there, there are standards and in a, in a particular area of town that for instance is thickly settled, there is a, a, there is a standard throughout the town, standard, standard speed limit. And therefore you don't have to keep putting signs up or changing signs and, or listening to reasons why that would be less appropriate or more appropriate. So, um, I, I don't know how much you guys were able to gather from the information that I gave you. Um, I know that Mr. Chadwick sent something about how long it takes to stop a fire engine or, you know, a large. Yeah. And I'm pretty sure that we all feel pretty strongly that people drive awfully fast in this town. If you've ever walked on Main Avenue, then you've felt the brush of the 70 mile an hour speeder going past you. So what, what would you like to do? We are now the road commissioners. If you read some of the minutes from the last several years, the road commissioner really was unable to accomplish very much. There wasn't a separate budget. There isn't a budget today. But is, is putting signage up and deciding what, what should be where, um, more a day-to-day function or is it really policy? And I, I would throw that out to you guys. And Mr. Mr. Bowen, I had asked whether you wanted to speak on this or not. And maybe we, we hear from the board members before you speak or the other way around. It's up to you.
With pleasure.
Mr. Chadwick.
Um, when you're talking about day-to-day, you know, putting a stop sign here or there, yes, I can understand that's kind of like day-to-day. Or putting signs up, period, is day-to-day, but deciding on speed limits in certain areas is not day-to-day. Or deciding if a stop sign needs to go here or if a yield needs to go there. I think that is more or less, in my opinion, coming before the, uh, road commissioners. Uh, same thing with turning one-way streets, uh, two-way streets into one-way streets or stuff like that. As the, the physical work of it, yes, it's day-to-day in my opinion.
Anyone else? Mr. Bessie?
Sorry, I couldn't get my fingers to work and unmute myself. So, I, I mean, I, I think I share the same concerns as, you know, the entire board and uh, probably a lot of people in this town that, um, speed is definitely negative factor in, in how people drive, not just in our community, but other communities also. Um, and I think a lot of what we've seen, um, accident-wise, uh, whether it be, you know, fatality or non-fatality, uh, could have been avoided had, uh, people had been, you know, paying attention, not speeding, obeying the laws of whatever the speed of the roads would be. We can set all kinds of policy and we can say, hey, we have a townwide ordinance ban of 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted. But it's only going to matter if people actually, one, pay attention to the policy, especially where, where a town that, you know, we go from, you know, 20,000-ish to 40 plus thousand in the summertime. So a lot of people that are coming into our community, are they going to know what our policies are? And then on top of that, the policy is only as effective as the enforcement behind it. So, you know, if we set a policy, how are we going to make sure that it's being enforced? Um, and making sure that, you know, maybe there has to be the hammer put down on people to understand that, you know, we're not going to stand for the way, you know, people drive in this town and speed in this town. So I am all for, um, setting policy and, and trying to make our wonderful town, our beautiful town as safe as possible on the roads. Um, but I think there needs to be some discussion about how we do it and having an approach that is going to make sense, um, and is also going to be able to be adhered to. You know, so yes, uh, policy and all of that stuff, that's definitely something that isn't necessarily a day-to-day function. It's more of a discussion and really figuring it out. And then whatever we decide if, you know, do we want to have 35 signs on every street saying 25 miles an hour? I don't know. Um, but that would definitely be something that we obviously wouldn't handle and, and go out and do ourselves. But I, I think it's more about the policy and the understanding and then making sure that whatever we're setting, people know about and we can make them adhere to it, um, by enforcing it because policies, like I said, policies are only as good as the enforcement that's behind it. So it's, it's getting, you know, the, the powers that would be enforcing whatever is enacted, uh, to actually be enforced. So, uh, there's a lot to it and it's not easy. You know, but, you know, if it was easy, everybody would do it. And, um, so I'm for making it happen and doing the right things, but uh, definitely making sure that all the minds are together to, uh, make the right choices and the right decisions to make sure that we're actually bettering what we're doing and not making it worse.
Um, I just would point out that we wouldn't be setting a policy. What I'm have put before you is, um, accepting a portion of mass general law, chapter 90, section 17C. And I believe, Mr. Bowen, that that would have to be adopted at a town meeting. Am I correct?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
So we would recommend to the town meeting that this portion of the law be adopted and therefore they would, obviously, we couldn't do it tomorrow morning. But we would discuss it and possibly bring it to the town meeting and therefore there would be a voice of the, of the residents. Ms. Corbett? I just wanted to make that clear.
Um, thanks. I, I like this idea. I'm sure everybody can, just as well as I can, think of portions of highways in town where, man, I'd like to see 25 miles an hour instead of 70. But in some ways, for me, just because of the way I'm built and the way I think, I feel like this is putting the cart before the horse. I would like to get a better understanding of what of, what are, what are our duties and responsibilities? If we have enforcement powers, what are they? What do we enforce? I, I would just like a stronger set of guidelines in terms of what the road commissioners do in the future, moving forward. That doesn't stand in the way of doing what it is specifically we're talking about tonight. But I went on the town website looking at the road commissioners page and there's stuff on there about what they do that I don't know if this is what we do. Um, it's a completely different setup than what we have now. It, it was back in 2018, 2017. The former were put together, um, with a completely different makeup. And I would just like a better understanding of what our uh, responsibilities are moving forward.
I'm going to have Mr. Bowen answer that after Ms. Quirk's question. I'm guessing you have a question.
Yeah, I, I understand now, um, sort of what, what, um, is before us. And so I, I appreciate that. I, I guess I comment it from the point of view, if we're, if we're talking about establishing a townwide speed limit. Uh, I would love for us to also talk about how we're going to enforce that. And I'm familiar and have lived in jurisdictions where, uh, there is pretty diligent enforcement through cameras and automatic ticketing. And you cannot imagine how, what a salutary effect that has on speed when you drive through an area and you virtually know that you're going to get a ticket if you're going above the speed limit. And I believe it pays for itself over and over again. So I think in addition to talking about speed limits, I'd like to see us talk about uh, methods of, of, of traffic quieting and enforcement that also may be revenue earners for the, for the town, as it turns out.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Bowen, I, can you address the, the questions that have been asked? Please? You know, what is it, what is it that we should do, can do, might do, shouldn't do, maybe?
Well, certainly I would prefer to the opponent of the idea of bringing the road commission back to the board of selection for the purpose, you know, what was hoped for here. But since she has now asked me to comment on it, uh, here it goes. It's probably worth taking a look at what the history of road commissioners. Why, why do we have road commissioners? The road commissioner is a fairly archaic office. And it dates from the olden days when we didn't have DPWs or municipal maintenance. We didn't have a municipal maintenance director. The road commissioners under informer times acted like a mini DPW board. And they appointed, uh, an officer who was variously known as the highway surveyor or highway superintendent. And, you know, they made sure that the roads were paved and designed in the right way and, and so forth. That kind of old-fashioned road commission survives in a few, I think somewhat less sophisticated towns. In Wareham, it's a bit of a, and, and I'm so, and I know this was Judy's baby, but, you know, so I, I intend no offense, but it's a bit of a, an archaic setup because you have municipal maintenance. You have a municipal maintenance director who performs the functions of, of what a highway surveyor or highway superintendent would do. So and, and municipal maintenance is under the direction of the town administrator. And the town administrator is responsible for day-to-day functions. So, um, by the time you subtract everything out of what the old, an old-fashioned road commission could do, there's really not a lot left. So I guess the question is, well, what is what? I, I think there's several methods spoken about the distinction between day-to-day and policy are right on with their comment. You know, your, your idea is to set broad policies. I think it's Jared or Ron said, you know, you're not going out there with a, a bag of concrete, digging the hole, putting up the, the sign and bolting it up. That, that's not what it's about. But, um, if there's a street where you think that there might be some issues, you can certainly draw that as a policy model to the, to the intention of the town administrator and say, you know, you really ought to have the municipal maintenance director take a look at this and perhaps do something about it. So, you know, what is your policymaking ability here or your rulemaking ability? If you take a look at chapter 40, section, I believe it's 22, uh, the board of selection is allowed to make rules and regulations regarding the conduct of traffic on roads with certain exceptions before. It's a whole lot of authority. And certainly as road commissioners, you could make rules and regulations relative to, uh, streets and waves. relative to uh streets and ways and how they're used. Uh, you you're taking a look at that Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, if you, I guess you'd wanna figure out whether the town has accepted that at some point. Uh, if the town has accepted it or about to accept it in the future, well, sir, you could set up minimum a limited town-wide uh for dense and subtle areas. I mean, that's the kind of thing that you can do. So, uh, there there doesn't have to be a conflict between day-to-day operation and your policymaking abilities. You can make rules and regulations. Uh, Sarah, I think you would ask about the ability to enforce. Road commissioners have no independent enforcement authority. Uh, it would go through the usual channels of uh creating a traffic regulation and if it gets violated, it gets enforced by the police department or if you have somebody special handing out parking tickets or what have you. Um, that's how it gets enforced. So really, I I think if you view it as a policymaking uh board to create rules and regulations, you're probably gonna be operating within the bounds of the charter and within the bounds of the law. And you know, so much of this is already decided in one little publication called The Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a state publication that tells you pretty much everything that you can do on a roadway, even right down to how big the sign can be and what colors it can be. Um, that might be something you'd wanna take a look at at some point.
The road, former road commissioners adopted that.
Yeah, it's on the website. Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't have to adopt it. It's uh uh, Mass DoT, the state requires everyone to follow it. So but it's good that somebody knew about it. Uh, so I think that's what you're dealing with. You're not dealing with the the nineteenth-century road commission, you're dealing with a twenty-first century road commission. If you think that there are rules or particular problems that you need to have, uh, perhaps make a decision, forward it through a chain of command and get it.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions that you had, Ms. Corbett?
Yes, thank you. To a very large degree, just one more, um, reading back over the minutes of the old road commissioners, there is almost every meeting, somebody coming forward with a neighborhood or personal request for a speed limit, a sign. Are we those people or do those requests go somewhere else now?
With your permission, Madam Chairman, I I think that's something that uh you can create a process for dealing with those sorts of things. I mean, ultimately, if uh new signs need to go up in a particular area, uh ultimately, that would be your decision. You know, how you got to the point where it was funneled to you would be up to you. You you could come up with a process where the initial approach is to uh public safety officials or uh municipal maintenance and then it got referred onto you if uh they were comfortable with what was being out and then make a call at that point. Or you can just go the other way around and have it come straight to you and then it filters out to those folks. Uh, I think I'd probably prefer the former only because uh if the public safety officials aren't comfortable with it, you probably don't wanna be acting on it. But again, your call.
The the real, there's a real unspoken elephant that's standing in the room and that is the cost of preparing any street signs, any additional signs. There is no funding in the today's budget. And so that would have to, if, you know, um municipal maintenance would have to come up with a budget of X to make a certain number of signs or, you know, that kind of thing. So any anytime we make, anytime we have thoughts that ultimately cost money, we have to be aware that we don't, we do not have a budget with any um overflow. In fact, this year's dollar buys far less than last year's dollar and we all know that. Is this something that you would, oh, I'm sorry, Jared, I didn't see. Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Well, in in regards to the enforcement, um, I I know that's more along the police side of things, but what is the possibilities of us being able to put up the same type of cameras that we have uh that they have in Rhode Island? Because I I know those those have gotten me for well over three hundred and seventy-five dollars in time. So, uh, I I'm pretty sure that would make this town quite a bit of money, uh, if if we did some research on putting those in. And uh, I mean, the alternative is to do something like this. I I don't know if you you guys can see that, but it's uh just speed bumps every ten feet on the roads. That that will really slow everyone down, so.
But and I'll come back to your comment, there is no money. Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
You have to be careful because if you want a civil rights lawsuit, tell them you're putting up cameras for money. They cannot be for money. They can be for enforcement. You cannot do it to generate revenue.
Thank you. So I think maybe what I hear, we, this has been a robust discussion. Why don't we put it back on the agenda for another couple of weeks and have you think more about what it is that we would like to do? I would urge you to read some of the road commissioners' meeting minutes, which are online. Um, the commission was created a while ago. Um, and as Mr. Bowen has pointed out, you know, in the olden days and the horse and buggy days, it was a whole lot different um than it is today in terms of e- even even the the vehicles that we're using on the road. I was using horse and buggies, you were using whatever. Okay, is that okay if we put it on for another two weeks? Excellent. Okay, um, Ms. Corbett, could you just quickly outline why the letter was written for Shine?
Uh, yes, um, a friend of mine from the Library Board of Trustees, our former chair, Holly Van Nest, was also a Shine counselor before her retirement last year. In fact, she was my Shine counselor when I had the um great pleasure of turning sixty-five and having to go on Medicare. And she really made a very, very, very confusing process much easier than it would have been otherwise because I tried to do it by myself and I became hopelessly lost and confused. Um, and I think it was just last week, Holly sent me, as well as several other people, um unfortunately, she got word rather late in the legislative session that part of the, um, I guess it was the governor's budget that the House and Senate were going to be looking at included a one million dollar cut to the Shine program. And I thought this was a terrible, terrible thing and reached out to Judy. And Judy then did what Holly's email that she had forwarded from the Shine community um suggested is to send this letter that was pre-drafted to your local state rep. And so that's what Judy does, is sent, you know, it was very late in the legislative session. I think it was the day before the end um that we found out about it and that Judy was able to send this letter to Susan.
So it actually was the governor's veto and we weren't, we still haven't heard whether it was vetoed or not, but um I'm gonna read the letter into the record because I firmly believe, as does Ms. Corbett, that the Shine program is, serves a really important function in this, it not just in this town, but certainly in this town. Um, so we sent the letter to uh Susan Williams Gifford. Dear Representative Gifford, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to respectfully request that the you override the governor's veto of the one million dollar earmark for the Shine serving the health insurance needs of everyone program in the fiscal twenty-five state budget. Shine provides essential free health insurance information, counseling and assistance to Massachusetts residents and their caregivers. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, almost one hundred thousand individuals relied on Shine counseling, a significant increase from the previous year. As our aging population continues to grow, the demand for Shine's services also rises. Continued funding for Shine is crucial crucial to ensure that our counselors can provide local, trusted and unbiased health insurance information and assistance at no cost to older adults and individuals with disabilities across Massachusetts. Understanding and leveraging the best health insurance options available is critical for those individuals to stay healthy and safe and it allows them to receive preventative and ongoing care that prevents costly emergency room visits. Please take action to override this veto and ensure that Shine can continue to serve our community. Thank you for your consideration. So again, we're, we are not aware of what happened in the budget considerations. Okay? Next, um, discussion and possible vote to appoint a representative to the South Coast Bike Way Alliance. This was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. Um, we had some discussion and then we had some questions and I'm know know what you all would like to do. Ms. Quirk?
Well, um, I'm a bicyclist, I'm interested in bicycling. Um, and I'm interested in helping the town to uh to adopt or endorse some more bicycle-friendly practices. Um, I'm not particularly interested in uh the bike path proposal that has been before the select board. Uh, but um would would be willing to monitor it for any positive um attributes it might be able to provide. You know, I'm willing to sit on this committee, uh, but just, you know, frankly, share that uh what I would consider to be helpful to the town may be a bit different than what the uh the committee believes would be helpful. And uh and I also am really, really keenly aware of the topic we've discussed over and over again tonight and and other times that we have no money to spend on any of this. So whatever, uh, whatever the outcome of this participation, it would not be further indebtedness for the, or any other kind of um financial burden for the town. But I'm willing to do it and uh willing to do other things that may go along with it, including soliciting uh information from other members of the community on what they think would be helpful for the town that may be able to be achieved better regionally.
Anyone else? No? Um, I will tell you that I have a problem with this as I also have a pro- problem with a bike way that begins nowhere and ends nowhere um that we've committed five hundred thousand dollars to. I think that certainly five hundred thousand dollars could have gone better spent. Um, the proposal before us and that I guess we've applied for is a five hundred thousand dollar grant to do the engineering along Minnet um Minnet Avenue. And I'm telling you, if you haven't walked on Minnet Avenue, you are taking your life in your hands. I think it's a terrible location. Is there a need for a bike path? Sure. Do I like driving in cities that have bike paths? No, I do not. I think they're very dangerous. And I've been in DC and I've been in other cities where they are, you know, they're city cities. We are not a city. But I I find them to be very very dangerous. So I I'm I'm maybe the naysayer here, but um I I'm not sure what benefit we would gain from this.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, first of all, I agree with you on everything that you've said. I I've actually bicycled on Minnet Avenue. And I used to ride my bike to work in Washington DC. So I know, um, I have a uh an idea of what makes safe bicycling and what doesn't. And I'm not actually a big fan of bike paths. I'm trying to find some sweet spot where we can get some uh some benefit from this that does not uh give us something we don't want and don't don't necessarily need. Uh, if there is no, if if you believe there's no such uh outcome possible, um, of course, I would be guided by your opinion on this.
That's only my personal opinion. And it only, it only applies to Minnet Avenue. I think a bike path may be a good idea. Not on Minnet Avenue.
I mean, I I think the 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 way I look at it, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a huge bicyclist outside of letting my kids ride their bikes in my driveway. Um, because I don't even want them anywhere near the roads and the crazy drivers. But, I mean, if 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 Sherry's willing to take some of her time to um sit sit in on some of these and and listen to the chatter that's going on um in other communities that might be part of this, just to kind of get a pulse uh of what's going on and, you know, some things, maybe they might work for our town, maybe they might not. But if she's willing to take the time to, you know, pursue that and and see it, I mean, I don't see the the hurt, there's no financial uh cost to us. It does not, it's not gonna help us either way because the, you know, the 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 grant or whatever it was that was um a- applied for or or given uh isn't gonna change. Um, so, I mean, if she's willing to do it, you know, I I am all for, you know, letting her pull the information and bringing it back to us so we can maybe understand it a little bit better um to where it might work uh in this town. But I know Minnet Ave is definitely not one of them. Um, because Mi- Minnet Ave is a, is a, is a speedway. Uh, it's uh got a lot of straight road to it. Uh, and unfortunately, we have an elementary school on that road. Um, and uh, you know, just not too, you know, maybe about a month ago, there was a fatal accident right at the elementary school. Um, but uh, but yeah, definitely uh all for, you know, maybe some ideas, but uh um, but yeah, that's my my personal opinion.
Sarah, Ms. Corbett? Thank you, Ms. Bessie.
Um, I agree with Ron. I I think that if Sherry's willing to spend her time on the um Bike Path Alliance until she decides it's not worth her time, that would be great. I'm a big, big fan of bike paths. I don't ride bikes. Um, but I've gone on the For Haven Bike Path through to Matapoyset. Um, just recently, my husband and I went on the brand-new portion of the Matapoyset Bike Path that is stunningly beautiful. Um, if you you park in the village and you walk out um out to the coast and it's just gorgeous. Um, there's a beautiful bike path in Bristol, um, Rhode Island. I could go on and on. But I am against a bike path on Minnet Ave. But I I've often wondered why we can't utilize some of the old train beds here in Wareham to have a similarly gorgeous, more rural bike path that would not interfere with traffic and it wouldn't be a danger to cars or bicyclists. So I I thank Sherry for being willing to put her time in to see if somehow um we could gain any benefit from a different perspective on bike paths through Wareham.
Okay. Mr. Chadwick, I guess you're being asked to make a motion to appoint.
Yes. I move to appoint Cherry Quirk as a representative of the South Coast Bike Way Alliance.
Second, motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Quirk to the South Coast Bike Way Alliance. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ms. Quirk, um, I think all of the paperwork is in the select board office. I just don't I don't have it, excuse me, in front of me, but I know we had it two weeks ago. So, we'll, we'll figure out how to let them know that you're on it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me. Um, I will do the update regarding WCTV contract with the select board. Um, Mr. Sullivan, myself, Mr. Menard, Mr. Gilbert and John Day, um, both from uh WCTV a couple of weeks ago um toured Room Five Twenty, formerly known as Three Twenty. And then we switched gears and we moved over to the Town Hall Auditorium. WCTV has bought the equipment to completely update the equipment in Room Twenty-seven. That probably will be accomplished in either late August or September. And then, um, what we decided, generally speaking, was that it didn't make sense to try and reconfigure Room Five Twenty, but it would make sense to use the room that we have, which is the auditorium. We've, we've talked about the auditorium before tonight. Um, the two roofs on Town Hall have been fixed, so it no longer leaks. The floor in the auditorium has been refinished. And um Mr. Menard and WCTV are working together to make that what I would call the great um auditorium room that it has always been um for years and years and years before we moved to the high school or the intermediate, to the intermediate uh intermediate school. So, we are moving forward with bringing up up-to-date and better equipment into uh Twenty-seven and that'll be not, it'll be soon. uh, 27 and that'll be not, it'll be sooner than later. And the auditorium probably won't be finished until, I don't remember what Mr. Menard, it would be several months. There's new lighting already in there. There will be some painting, there might be some soundproofing on the walls and the ceilings. But, um, WCTV is working closely with the town to make sure that we have better broadcasting capabilities for our residents. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on the opt-out.
I move to approve the opt-out and reduction fee application for curbside billing this year '25 in the amount of $731.49.
There's a second? Motion made and seconded to approve the opt-out and reduction fee. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Is there any 48-hour business? Okay. Um, we have a dangling issue, which would be the appointment of the three committee members to the Bylaw Review Committee.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chadwick?
I'd like to move, uh, to appoint Jared Fredrickson, Jillian Morton and Julie Moran to the Bylaw Review Committee with a term to expire, excuse me, with a term to expire, expire April 30th, 2025.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve, to appoint those three individuals? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. They will have to all complete the ethics training, the open meeting law training and do the other, uh, reading that we require before we swear people into bylaw committee or to any committee. Thank you very much to all of the people who applied to be on the committee. Uh, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, ma'am chairperson. Yeah, um, as a select board member, Chadwick spoke about before Cape Verdean Festival this weekend, just please keep an eye on for the rain date, uh, now tropical storm Debbie's, uh, wreaking a little bit of havoc on, uh, our weather for the weekend, so. And I believe they're going to make their decision by tomorrow night, so look, look for that to see, uh, which, which day it'll officially be held on. Uh, you know, it, and speaking about the auditorium, if you pass by the auditorium, you'll see that they're actually rerunning the wires to the lights in there. Uh, you know, one of the big concerns is how dark it is in there, so they're rerunning lights, putting new lights in that will help brighten up the room as well. So that's part of one of the projects. I believe in, uh, Fall Town Meeting where they have to request some funds for the painting and a little bit of the rehab of the woodwork in there uh, as well, about, uh, $75,000 or so, so. We're, uh, we're, we're, we're going through lots of colors on them, but I think Wickham Gray is right now the top, the top choice for the, uh, for the colors. Um, we also eventually, as you know, will need, uh, need new, uh, curtains in there and the big one would be the acoustics for the room. So we're trying to get some, uh, some folks in there with expertise on the acoustics, you know, to reduce the echoing. Big part of that would be the windows, of course, so, um. Just a reminder, Bayview Park Construction is going to start very soon, September 1st, uh, over an onset now. I, I personally believe September is the best month out of the year when you live in New England, September and October. But we need to get these going or else it would impact next, uh, next year's summer calendar year '25 season, so. Uh, they're going to get going on that. Lawrence Lynch is the company, they're well-known, the company can certainly get it done. Uh, I've been, we've been meeting with, uh, South Coast Hospital Group regarding their donation of the gazebo for Bessie Park. As you know, that was part of the original expansion of the hospital and, uh, we've certainly worked with the Historic District Commission to create a, uh, a unique gazebo design. And one of the key aspects of it is it has, uh, has architectural features that were on the Toby, uh, homestead, so. In a way, it's an homage to the Toby Homestead. So they're working on that. I think it's been substantially approved by the Wareham Historic District Commission for, for the design and look of it. So I'm looking forward and excited to get that amenity in, uh, in Bessie Park. As we know, there's been a lot of exciting things coming on in that section of, uh, downtown. Uh, we're coming into hurricane season, it's just, uh, tropical storm, Hurricane Debbie's now tropical storm. Uh, so it's also, it's, it's apropos that we are starting to talk to the departments about refilling, refilling what would be the administrative assignment of the Emergency Management Director. In the past, uh, the position's been held by the EMS Director, Wareham Police Department Lieutenant, uh, the Director of the Health Department, so. Well, it does not follow a certain position or department. It has always been a talented person with the background and the ability to serve in that capacity. So we're looking forward to get that going. Uh, and then lastly, for the, what's going on with the, uh, the twinning visit, if you will. My children do have some Harry Potter wizardry robes, if you would like to use those for the, uh, for the visit. I think it's, uh, Ravenclaw and, uh, you know, Gryffindor, of course. So if, if you need those to match with the regalia, I'm sure they'll lend them to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Liaison Initiative Reports. Um, I had asked you, uh, a little while ago to each of you come up with a list of three or four initiatives that you would like to address, start working on, continue working on is in the, this year as, as, uh, you're s- seating on the, uh, select board. Ms. Corbett, I'm going to let you continue because you've already shown us or told us about one. Would you briefly talk about the others?
Sure. Um, the other one is, uh, volunteer recruitment. I'd like to come up with ways that we can get the word out there that we are always in need of, uh, people who are willing to volunteer to serve on our town boards and committees, um, whether or not there's openings now. Everybody's always cycling through term and term limits, so. I want to, I've got a couple of ideas on, on get, at least getting the word out about, um, how to volunteer for town committees and boards. And then, um, I would like to continue the conversation and work that Sherri and I have already done on stronger earth removal bylaws for the town, so that along with the select board recaps, those are my three priorities.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bessie?
Mr. Bessie. Mr. Bessie has a lot of things in his mind, but, uh, I think, uh,
I said three or four.
I have five.
Hmm.
I'll let you.
Go ahead, Mr. Bessie.
Uh, no, so I, I mean, I, I think I want to, uh, continue just, you know, with, you know, what I talked about when I first, uh, when I first ran, uh, for office and was elected, uh, is to continue to try to have the, the transparency, um, at the, um, you know, at the, uh, the, the government level of, uh, you know, being open and honest, um, and, um, really just letting people know, you know, who we are, what we're doing, uh, and what we're trying to accomplish, so, uh, keeping the transparency, um, really being a voice, um, for, um, for the people of the town. Uh, you know, a lot of people have a lot of great ideas, but they don't know how to um, express them, uh, so being able to be that, um, that person that, you know, they can come to and, and, um, and, you know, either make a phone call, um, catch me walking in town, whatever it might be, just being that, continue to try to be that voice of, of understanding for people that don't know how to express themselves. Um, and continuing to try to, uh, figure out how we can, um, you know, there's a lot of talk in, in town about how, um, you know, we have a much older community um, and really trying to continue the push for, um, not necessarily want to call it a youth movement, but a youth movement, uh, and really trying to figure out how we can one, keep the, the children that we have in this town and the young adults that we do have in this town, um, here, uh, so that we can see the community can continue to thrive and grow. Um, so, um, you know, transparency, uh, voice, uh, and, um, you know, working to try to, uh, keep, you know, youth services, uh, youth, uh, organizations, um, in this town to help, uh, our town continue to, to grow and I don't want to say die out, but, um, you know, become stagnant and, and not have, uh, what we need. So those are kind of the three things I want to continue working on.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
So, um, I have four, of which you've probably heard at least a little bit about two of them. Uh, first, I'd like to continue working on the sort of solar renewable energy issues that we've been talking about. Just glanced at the, uh, Globe online headlines and saw that the governor is, uh, trying to call the legislators back for a special session on citing, uh, hoping to reform citing in the state, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll see how that goes, but it's not, it's not dead yet in the words of Monty Python. Um, and, uh, and I think in order to be, uh, successful or even, you know, sort of moderately keep our heads above water, it's going to take a lot of strategizing and coalition building to, uh, to be able to be, um, at least moderately successful. There are a lot of forces working against the town. Uh, the second issue, actually, earth removal. I mean, two ways to look at that. What's happened in the past? Uh, was that right? Was it in accordance with the regulations? Uh, what do we want our regulations to be going forward? And I think those are a couple of different issues that go into this, that, uh, that really require action soon. The third thing I would say is interested in working on, as I have been at least on the planning board, the intersection of zoning bylaws and economic development. Because I think that, uh, we, we need to look at our zoning bylaws as well as our town bylaws and ask ourselves whether these bylaws are positioning the town to, uh, to be the town it wants to be. And if not, what changes do we need to make? And how do we need to constitute the planning office so that it can execute the town's vision? And, um, and again, help us to, uh, to direct the town where we want it to go. Uh, and how can we actively encourage economic development as, as opposed to waiting for whatever comes to us to come? Uh, what should we be doing to go out and find it and bring it? Uh, and then last thing is the cycling I talked about earlier. This is a beautiful town. It's a beautiful town to bicycle in. Uh, it's a dangerous town to bicycle in, which makes it no different than virtually everywhere else. Uh, but I think there are ways that we can make it both, um, better town to bicycle in, a safer town to bicycle in, and a safer time to, town to drive in as well. And that's, that's really what I have.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
All right. Uh, first I wanted to say, um, the reason why I'm so active in the youth of this community, uh, and being able to do whatever I can for them is first, I grew up on an island where if you didn't play a sport, there was nothing to do. You literally sat home and looked at the wall or read a book. It was before video games really, unless you had the money to buy a, you know, Nintendo or one of those systems, you did nothing. Um, and the other reason is I want to make sure that we can keep the kids out of the back of our ambulances. Uh, you know, it's something no paramedic or EMT really ever can get out of the, their head, so. That's why I'm really active in it. Uh, so that leads me into my thing because it's all pretty much for the youth. Um, I'm still working closely with the Plymouth County Children's Advocacy Center on forming a program, uh, for parents to look for the signs, uh, of child predators, uh, online, uh, in gaming systems. Uh, unfortunately, it's not going to be an easy task. It's going to be a long and hard task, uh, and it makes it even harder. Um, and the huge unfortunate is, um, both the Plymouth Children's Advocacy Center and Children's Call for Cape Cod, uh, are extremely busy. Um, which nobody likes. Uh, if they weren't busy, it'd be a heck of a lot better, but unfortunately they're busy and that's just the time we're in now. Um, I'm also working with all the youth sports programs in town. Uh, I've talked to them all recently. Uh, as I said earlier, the the seasons are coming up, uh, trying to help everyone with stuff that I can possibly do on my end and uh, see what I can do to help them out in general. Um, I've also been in talks with, excuse me, the schools, um, trying to bring back, uh, what, what I call an intermediate school, uh, basically it would be for, um, they used to have it before. It's more for kids that have trouble learning. Um, that way, they don't have the hecticness of the rest of the school going on. Uh, it's more one-on-one. It's something, I know a lot of kids, uh, for years in coaching football, uh, it definitely helps them out. Um, still trying to work on bringing back a Boys and Girls Club to the town of Wareham. It's been years and years in, uh, the works. Just the problem is with the state of Massachusetts, excuse me, not the state of Massachusetts, with Boys and Girls Club of America, you need to fall under, need someone else's charter. Uh, we used to be under New Bedford's charter. Um, so we would have to either go to Cape Cod or Plymouth and I know, or I believe Brockton. Uh, I did try and reach out to Nantucket and unfortunately they said, because we're too far away from them, they said no. Uh, I knew before that Plymouth, uh, had no interest as well. I'm still doing the research for them and once we can get an approval to fall in their charter, uh, then that's the first step in finding out how to do it or getting it back. Uh, lastly, and this is my most exciting one, is I'm working with the superintendent of the school, Mr. DeAndrea, on bringing an EMT program to the seniors, uh, and it would be for the last semester of the school year. Um, any senior that wishes to, they'd be able to take an EMT class. Uh, you don't need to be 18 to take the class. You only need to be 18 to test and you have a year to test uh, from when you finish the class. Um, I'm meeting with, uh, with GMEC EMT School out of Fairhaven and Mr. DeAndrea on Tuesday morning uh, to try and work out a plan to see if we can make this happen. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, I just have three. One, I'm going to continue to work on making sure that we have Veterans Day parades and that we have appropriate services on Memorial Day. It's really important to me that we honor the veterans who, um, paid a price. Some of them didn't come home. Um, some of them came home and weren't able to resume their lives as they had been living them before. Uh, I'm also working with a group to revive the Don't Trash Wareham program. And that's going to, we're going to be having our first town-wide trash pickup volunteering on September 21st and September 22nd of this year. We have all of the signs ready to go. Um, this program stopped because of COVID, but we had several hundred volunteers who over a period of two days picked up and, uh, better than two whole dumpsters of trash from the side of the road. Um, so you'll be seeing a lot more about that. And there will be one in the fall and one in the spring. It's interesting to know that Amanda Cobb, who is Chair of our Recycling Committee, um, is also going to be actively involved, uh, now, and this is, that's great news. The other thing that I want to continue to work on is making sure that Wareham is an affordable place for our seniors to live. Because they're being priced out of Wareham. They're being priced out of Wareham because of the cost of food. They're being priced out of Wareham because of the real estate taxes. And if they are living in a mobile home, their rents are going up. Lots of people have grown up here and lived here. Many of them came after World War II. The older generation, a little bit older than I am, um, because Wareham was an affordable place to live. That's why we have so many um, mobile home parks, mobile Mobile homes were created by the governor to be affordable housing, um, by the gov- government, by the federal government. And they were classified as affordable housing when they were first created. So, when there was an active, um, military base and there continues to be one, there was also a prisoner of war camp at Camp Edwards on the Cape. And many, many people worked on the base and many of those families are still here in Wareham. So I'm going to continue to try and figure out ways. I endorse the, um, Senior Work Off Program. And I'm exploring other avenues to make sure that Wareham's residents can, can afford to live here. I don't want this to be a gentrified town. So, that's mine. Is there, oh, Mr., any other comments about initiatives? No. Board comments? I think we did those. How about a, uh, motion on the minutes, please, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of 7:23, 24.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk? Ms. Quirk? Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, they are approved. Is there any further business to come before us? Chadwick?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion? It is not debatable.
Again?
The motion made and seconded to adjourn at 8:51. I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk? Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I have to say that was probably one of the most beneficial meetings we've had in, in a long time. Thank you very much for your honesty and for your thoughtfulness. Appreciate it. Good night, Wareham. It's 8:52.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.